Is there someone in the audience who would like to offer a prayer?
I will.
Mark, please.
Heavenly Father, I thank you, Lord, for our wonderful community. You've allowed us to be a part of God. I pray for all of our leaders that are here tonight. I pray that you would give them wisdom, God, give them direction. I pray for the economic strategies in the year 21, God, that they would be successful for our county, for our town, for Milan. I thank you, Lord, for all that you're going to do and all that you've done in our lives. In Jesus's name we ask, amen.
Roll call. The way the public order at 6:01 PM. Now roll call.
Mayor next.
President.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Lucero.
Here.
Counselor Padilla.
Here.
Counselor Redarte.
So he's not president? Please stand and join me in the presence of the citizens.
Ladies and citizens, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get to the approval of the agenda, don't want housekeeping like you guys. The closed session for litigation, I want to table that until we can find new counsel that advises us correctly and doesn't advise us to break the law as a city council, okay? The counsel was directed by our attorneys. I have a little bit of friends out here. I was going to ask them questions since he's the one that's been speaking with the lawyers. What kind of an attorney advises its clients to violate its own charter, to break its own ordinances, and to violate state statute, okay? And therefore, we shouldn't be threatening anybody with litigation with these attorneys that we have. They are unethical, they're corrupt, they're greedy, period. If you look what happened with me, they refused to defend me when the state came after me because they gave Michelle Newhan Christmas campaign money. And they said that they were doing it because they represented the State Highway Department's conflict event just, okay? After that, they refused to represent me with Beverly Michael and refused to give a reason, even though I've been looking. No laws, not no laws at all, anywhere. And then they advised you guys to violate the charter. They advised you guys to violate our city ordinances, and they advised you guys to violate state statutes. Therefore, I want this thing tabled until... I mean, it's not a emergency anymore. Well, number three's been screwed up for a while. Jacobs ain't going nowhere until we can find new counsel to represent the city.
Bobby, I don't think we're going to take him to court or anything. It just...
Well, it says threaten litigation right there.
Yeah, but you know, I have to send him later, tell him, hey, look.
Well, then let's do it in open session, guys. Why do we need to go into closed doors?
Because...
Let's not hide anything here. It's bad enough we already hit the lawsuit that was done against me, and we have a rolling court, and we violated every... all of our ordinances, all of our charter, and the Open Meetings Act, state statute, guys. And that was at the advice of these attorneys. And now we're going to go into closed session because we're threatening litigation.
Where'd that come from, threatening litigation to?
Mark and I put that on the agenda. We would like to advise you, nobody's threatening litigation on time.
Let's just do it right here in open meeting in front of God and everybody instead of hiding behind closed doors. If there's not any threatened litigation, then we don't need to go behind closed doors. We can do it right here in the open, in front of Jacobs, in front of God, and in front of the citizens, guys, the way it's supposed to be done.
But we... But there's some council members here that don't know the full story that we need to talk about, Bobby.
Guys, so why can't we talk about it right here?
Because I think it's really important that we don't beat up people in public.
Wow.
That's what it's about. It's about not ruining people's reputation.
That's hiding from the public, guys. That is going into closed session for something that is not legal for us to go into closed session for. If there's not going to be threatened legal action, if we're not going to sue them, then why don't we discuss it right out here in the open for the public and everyone to see? That makes no sense, guys. We're going to go into closed session, so we're lying on the agenda. Threaten litigation. Come on, guys. I want this tabled, and I'll entertain a motion as such. Either that, or I want the charter changed to where we discuss whatever this is right now in the open, guys, because this is wrong. This is what's happened to me over the last six, seven months, guys. And we're not going to go in here in closed session out of the public's eye and discuss something that we should be discussing for the public and everybody to see. So either table it, or we go ahead and when we discuss it out in the open and from the public.
What exactly are we... What are we discussing? What exactly are we discussing?
That's why they might go into closed session because they don't want to discuss it out here. We're talking about Jacobs and their neglect of well number three.
Does it go further than that? Are there other issues that were happening around the city?
Well, I've been around Jacobs' contract forever, guys. This doesn't change anything. This is one of the reasons that I've been claiming that contract.
Well, you don't... That might end up... We may end up doing it.
Well, there you go.
Well, let's discuss them. Here, we go in there, and it's...
We need to discuss it in closed session.
Why?
There's a reason for it.
Why? What's the reason?
Because there's certain circumstances with the contract that we don't know that we need to discuss in the contract.
We don't know the contract? I know the contract, Eric.
Right, I don't know. You need to hear. There's names that might be involved, so to protect those people with the names.
So then we don't need to say names. We just need to say Jacobs' workers.
What's the big deal?
The big deal is if there's not going to be no litigation, it's a lie on the damn agenda. Period. And we're hiding from the public. That's the big deal, Eric. We already had our lawyers advise us to break the law. So now you're paying two lawyers, my lawyers and the city's lawyers. I mean, really, guys, think about that.
This is about the well, right?
Yeah, it's about the well. So why don't we discuss it in the open? Every single person in the city of Grants is affected by well number three.
Go into private session, talk about it calmly.
And then we come out and we say, no decisions were made, but we're not going to tell the public what was said in there, Eric.
You can professionally.
That's against the law, bro.
No, it's not.
It is. We're not suing them, and we don't need to go into closed session to discuss it. That's it, guys, it really is.
It is a potential litigation.
Litigational...
Potential.
It is a potential litigation.
So what? Just not even five minutes ago, you said it wasn't.
Yes, it is. I didn't say it wasn't.
Well, who did? You did. You said it's not about litigation. Just not even five minutes ago.
Okay, so... Okay, potentially it could be because of the issue with well number three.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to table this or discuss it in open session, not in closed doors, guys. It's wrong. What part of that don't we get?
Why is it wrong to go in there and talk about it so we all can find out more about what's happened?
Why shouldn't the public know about it?
We could come back and talk.
Huh?
Because it could be something simple that we want to escalate into so big.
You mean, like you guys did with... Seriously, think about it. Yeah, seriously. Okay? There is no way, guys, that I will allow these attorneys to represent us in anything ever again.
You won't?
They lie. They lie, yeah. And of course, you're going to vote for the corruption because you're part of the closed-door meetings.
Perfect.
You know it is. You know it is. It's amazing. At least now it's coming out in the open instead of being all unsecreted, okay? They refused me in defense twice, but they jumped on it the minute you guys came after me. Why, guys? Because they're corrupt. And they invited you guys to break state statute, to break all the laws, our own charter, which you guys held an oath to uphold. There you go.
First time I've heard this.
When did you hire this attorney? When did you hire this?
My attorney?
His attorney for the city. What was his?
Our attorneys were hired 14 years ago, long before... They were all this... I'll miss before I ever came on the council. Yeah. They were our attorneys before I was on the council, guys. Oh, yes, they were, Eric. And we renewed their contract over and over. I've been here 14 years.
When's the last time we renewed their contract?
Uh, three years ago.
Oh, who did that?
The council did.
Right.
And that's why...
It went out forbidden.
And now we are at a point where they have advised the council to break the law, to break statutes, to break ordinances, and to break the charter. That's where we're at, guys.
First time I've heard of this, that dude.
What they do, that... The lawyers... Well, because you're not dealing with the lawyer's prayers. Fred Redarte. So that's why I wanted to ask him tonight. What kind of lawyer advises you to break the law? Obviously, one that doesn't care about the client, doesn't care about the law.
That's the first time I've heard of us breaking the law with our attorneys.
How did you guys get a vote to sue me?
I didn't hear about any...
There you go.
...laws with your attorneys.
So were you... Then you weren't part of the rolling forum then?
I don't know what you're talking about.
There you go. So it must have been the other thing, right?
Well...
Because there's no way that you guys can do something like this without it being done in an open meeting. And yet it's been done, and everybody just wants to sweep it under the carpet. Oh, no. It's quiet. Let's be quiet. But that's okay. You guys want to go into closed session? I'll come out and tell everybody what was said in closed session.
That's fine.
That's fine, okay? That's what we'll do there. Okay, approval of the agenda. Go where you want.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
For a second.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Padilla?
Yes.
Citizens to address the council, Aaron Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. I'm over here tonight to try to figure out... I've been trying to find out since before Christmas what kind of an ordinance we have against panhandling. It's getting out of hand in Grants. And the reason that I'm here is because every time there's a panhandler out there claiming to be a veteran, I'm the commander of the American Legion, I get a phone call. They won't produce any proof that they are a veteran. We haven't been able to get... Only one person out of all of them produced any kind of proof he was a veteran. And he held up his sign that said, "We'll work for money." I went out there and I talked to him personally, and I offered him $20 because it was a cold day. And I said, "We'll get together and you can... We'll do... Put something for you to work later." And he says, "No, if I can't work, I don't want your money." That's a true veteran. Okay, we got these guys out here. There's one that lives right there on San Jose Drive. I've cornered him several times. Lucky Mason's cornered him several times. He's not a veteran. And you ask him why he's doing it? He says, "It's easy pickings in Grants because people think I'm a veteran." You hang up... He hold up a sign and said, "I'm a veteran, I need help." I see more people handing these men money, women, and they're not veterans. But that's beside... We don't need all this panhandling in Grants. Look at the garbage out there by that wall where they're panhandling, going to Walmart. I know every one of you, even as bad as the situation is, you still have gone to Walmart. Look at the trash that's out there. You, the city, are paying to clean it up. And these guys are sitting out there. They're raking in the money. Some of them are making more than a working person does, you know? And I've seen it in Albuquerque myself even, where they walk a del sat there. I had a veteran one time. We went down to investigate him, and he sits there all day in a wheelchair with his leg under it. When he gets over to his truck, which is a nice truck, he gets up, stretches, gets in his truck, and drives off. It's not... There's got to be some way to put an ordinance to stop this panhandling.
Soon as we get a new attorney, we'll address that.
I don't think we need an attorney. I think we just need to get...
Well, we got to have attorneys who follow the law because they help us write the ordinance. Because once we pass an ordinance, it is law.
Something needs to be done because this is getting totally out of hand.
Yeah, but how do the, you know, the common folk know about these people that say they're veterans? How do they know? They just want to get money to help them out?
That's right. And that's why I say we need... We... But we go out there, we corner them. A lot of times, we get them to leave. But then there's some that we can't. And this one guy for Christmas, it was nice weather. He was there every day. Lucky went down and talked to him. I went down and talked to him. He says, "There's nothing you can do." Well, let's do something about it. It gets to the point. My folk brings it off the hook all the time because I am the commander. And you know, and they get asked, you know, the people will ask them, "Well, why don't you go to the American Legion? The American Legion will help you out." Says, "No, we've already talked to the American Legion, and they won't help us." They've never talked to us because they can't prove their...
Yeah, last time we researched the panhandling laws, the ACLU basically comes out to protect panhandlers. And we've seen that in Albuquerque. Albuquerque's tried to stop it. And there's all kinds of rallying that then we're discriminating against the poor because we're not allowing them to seek money however they determine. I don't know. Steve may know more about it, but I know I've done some research. There's nobody that dislikes panhandling more than I do. And I know Fred has spoken to me about wanting us to do something. The last I researched it, the ACLU will come out of the woodwork the minute we try to pass some ordinance.
Senator Sanchez, this is the perfect time to introduce you, sir. Would you please stand up for me? This is our senator-elect, Senator Joshua Sanchez.
Hello, Mayor.
Maybe you can help us with this at the state level as your first goal out there, okay? See if we can do something about this type of...
We will. We need to because you veterans have served our country greatly. You know, these guys are out here being fakes, and they're taking money and taking advantage of the hardworking people.
But there's... I mean, there's still... There should be a wait. You can see these... I mean, if they're out there one time because they're roped down on the highway or something like that, maybe that's different.
But if they're there every day for...
Every day. Or they're there every week for months on months.
You have a little dog, you know?
Yeah. It's like, come on. There's got to be something. But I know Steve and his... Their hands are tied without you guys helping them. But if they're out there and they see them there day after day after day, there should be something that could be done.
Maybe we can put a bit of pressure that way, chief, without violating their constitutional rights? I know it's a slippery slope.
Right, so panhandling, you can't outlaw it. What you can do is, you know, where they're at by Walmart, you can put signage saying, "No parking or standing in your vehicle at this juncture of the road," or whatever. You can do things to...
We can set timeframes.
Right.
You can only do it between these hours. You can only do it at these locations.
Midnight to 6:00 in the morning?
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. Well, for traffic flow, like right there at the corner leading from Walmart, you know, you stop that there.
You can make it from the time Walmart closes until just before they...
You know, but like this... Like this subject that Aaron's talking about, I don't really know a way we, as the police, can prove whether he's got a DD-214. Is he a vet? Is he not a vet? Because if he's taking money by trick or deception, then that's fraud, okay? No matter if it's just he does it to one. I mean, two bucks is two bucks, I know. But at least it'll get him moving to the next city, maybe? I don't know. But that's the only thing I can think of is if there's a trick or deception, maybe we could do something there. But I mean, Lucky and Aaron had talked to some of my guys, and we've been looking for this guy. He's in a Sebring, I think. Yeah, so we're going to kind of focus a little bit and see where he's coming from, what's going on with this guy, if he's for real. But yeah, we're on it.
But you can't put no panhandling.
No.
Can't put no panhandling.
Do something else.
But we need some help. We need some help to... These guys are there every day, every day, and every week. This guy's been over there for six months, off and on.
No, they're parked outside the road. They'd have dropped on their roadway. Yes, I mean...
Yeah, see, that's a...
Maybe there's a way they can apply for that sign. Maybe come to you and...
That they have to get a permit to panhandle.
Check out their credentials and say, "Okay, you're okay to panhandle near the..." And say, "You're a vet."
Okay, I go out there a lot. So does Lucky. And we ask them. We actually stop, we get out, and we ask them for a DD-214, a VA card, some kind of proof they're a veteran. And if they're a veteran, they can prove they're a veteran.
Tattooed, man, a veteran's got something, guys.
Well, then we tell them to change their sign. If they don't change their sign the next couple of days, then they're gone.
Well, I mean, we've told... I mean, I've made them take... I've taken the signs away from them. I know that's probably not supposed to happen. But when they tell me that they're going to do it anyway, I just take their sign and rip it out. But, you know, we've got to do something as a community. I'm a businessman in this town, so is Lucky, you know? And as I said, we've got to do something for our city.
Well, it just goes to show the people here, you know, care about our veterans. And if they said they have a sign, they're going to do the money.
Believe me, they do. I mean, I've done different fundraisers at Walmart, and the people really care about what's going on with Operation Woman Warrior or different things like that. The Cibola County people have a big heart. But we can't let people take advantage of that big heart. We've got to figure out a way to stop it.
Well, maybe we need to come up with some solutions or some ideas.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Josh, you want to step up here and give us a little spiel now that I already introduced you to? And already threw you under the bus for your first day at the legislature?
First assignment?
I am so pleased you won, David. There's no doubt about it. Congratulations.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I appreciate you guys having me here. I just seen you guys having your first meeting. And I'm told everybody when I won, I will be here, and I will... Whatever you guys need. Most all of you have my phone number. You call me at any time. Stuff like this, we will work on. I appreciate all the support from this town. Grants is a great town. Cibola County's are great. And thank all of you. I really appreciate it. Whatever I can do now to help you guys... I was on the meeting the other day with your guys at Capital Outlay. We will work on that. We will get you guys some funds. I don't know what's going to be there this year. It looks pretty slim pickings. But whatever we can do, I will work closely with you guys, and you know, we'll get stuff done. Again, thank you. Thank you for having me, and it was fun running and meeting all you people. It was great.
I won't call you any more than I already do.
Is there any questions for me?
I think we all have our numbers.
I can pass it out.
Yeah. I... Five... My number is 505...
That is there.
And if you want to email us, one of the ladies in the office, she'll get back to you right away and get to me. And it's J.A.S. the number four, N.M. at gmail dot com. And you can give that to anybody. You can give my cell phone number out. If I don't return the calls, sometimes I'm working out a signal. I will call you back, send me a text message. I get back to you every day.
Very good.
Again, thank you, guys. Have fun on the campaign, meeting all of you. And I met Mr. Lucky here, and I got to meet you. I met the chief, everybody.
Is your grandfather still with us?
He's passed.
I thought I heard that.
Ninety-seven.
I'm really sorry to hear that. I loved him at the parade.
He enjoyed himself that day.
Just an awesome man.
There's very few left. He was one of the few left.
Yeah, one of the few. You know, that's going to be a sad day when we bury our last World War II veteran, guys.
Yep.
That's going to be a very sad day.
Again, thank you, guys, for everything. I love this town.
Thank you, Josh. Okay. Anybody out there want to discuss charter compliance? I'll tell you right now, we are not even compliant with our charter because of what we got going on behind closed doors. Period. Next. Approval of the regular city council meeting minutes.
I make the motion to approve the regular city council meeting.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Padilla?
Yes.
One minute to the public. Blackberry?
Joe.
Joe Boyden?
Boyden. So they have an opening, and Ms. Boyden is interested in serving. And I believe she's already been going to the library quite a lot and supporting the staff with ideas.
Take a motion.
I make the motion to approve. I thank the application. Attorney General Boyden?
Counselor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Padilla? Next. Board appointments for... That's what we were just discussing. Board appointments for the Economic Development Board. I think before we discuss that, we should go ahead and do this new amendment to a contract with them. This won't... This will be on the next agenda. We're not voting on this tonight. This is just for discussion, okay? Because we didn't put it to vote on. That's who's put on the vote.
It was in your budgets.
Okay, it was in our budget, yes, but we just started to vote on it. So this one here, we'll put on the agenda to vote on the amount of money that we're going to cut, okay? We're cutting it for obvious reasons. Fred can explain it better than I can. On that note, if they're going to cut us a seat, we'll vote on this too by the next meeting. Um, I say that we cut the citizen at large because it is our responsibility as elected officials to oversee all of these votes from the cog to the West Authority to all of them, okay? And I think that that basically covers that one there, doesn't it? And we'll vote on, make sure it's on the next agenda. Even if, I don't wanna have a meeting on the eighteenth because it's Martin Luther King Day and everybody's off, okay? So if we can get away with, uh, February third or whatever it is, that next Monday, great. If not, if Donald has something that's pressing, we'll put this item on there too.
Okay, Donald does have First Street, I believe, in Well Three.
If it's pressing, okay, if they're pressing, and we'll plan that meeting for the Tuesday, the nineteenth. That Tuesday evening, that way, everybody's on schedule. It's all out there now. The public's getting noticed right now. Um, so we'll do it on the nineteenth and we'll have only the items that Donald needs done. Or the critical, First Street, or wherever the other one is. And then there's stuff to do with the Economic Development. Okay, any, any objections? Any, anything to say about that?
No, it's for me.
Okay? Next one. Uh, reference, refinance reference, refinance. I don't think we need a reference loan, guys.
So the Clean Water Revolving Loan of seven eight was the Jefferson-Washington Project. And the, um, state has, has notified us that they have a lower interest right now. We're paying, we're scheduled to pay, we haven't started paying yet, a 1.2% interest. We can get a 0% interest. And this is a 25-year loan. And we would need to pay forty-eight thousand, a little over forty-eight thousand to refinance. But we would save about a hundred and fifty thousand over the term of the loan. So my recommendation would be to refinance that loan.
That's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Yeah, agree.
I'll entertain a motion. Any questions first? Any questions first? I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Should you go ahead and then refinance that loan with zero seven eight?
Second?
I second.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Lucero? Councilor Paliya?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'd like to note on that, the resolution number is 211708 on that approval. Yes. Then number six is on the same.
Entertaining a motion, you go in there, oh, no.
Number six on the same project, um, the Clean Water Revolving Fund, Jefferson and Washington. During the term of construction, we accumulated $21,196.29 in interest. And I would like your approval to pay this interest now rather than tack it on to our loan.
We, uh, I get the funds for this, is it?
We do.
Clutches. Judge Ricks. Councilor Councilor?
I've got a question. I'm gonna say, I'm moving in.
Yeah, I, I talked with them and it sounds like we can still do this.
Because I was reading that, so I don't see my one question.
Right, I saw that too. Uh, Donald, Donald conversed with them and told them it would be on this meeting's agenda. They're aware of that.
Anything else? Please, council.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion to go ahead and make the payment for $21,000, $136.42 for the interest.
Second?
Second.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Lucero?
Yes.
Councilor Paliya?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session for possible litigation.
We're gonna have Mark Teshama.
You got a motion?
Join us?
I make a motion.
Second? Councilor Garcia? Councilor Lucero? Councilor Paliya?
Yes.
Right behind you.
Huh? Are you there?
It turned off, aren't my crystals?
Oh, we still have an audience? Yes, we do.
Well, it is.
I'll entertain a motion to come back into open session.
I'll make a motion, come back to the open session?
Second? Councilor Garcia?
For you.
Yes. Councilor Lucero?
Yes.
Councilor Paliya?
Yes.
Um, no decisions remain in there except that as soon as we get the final numbers on a pump that was run out of oil, uh, we will put Jacobs under reach-up contract. And we'll see where it goes from there, okay? And like I said, that won't happen until we get the final numbers. Comments from the council? Laura, you got anything?
I do not.
Eric?
Twenty twenty-one, let's go. That's about it.
Rick? Rick?
I just, I just, it's a question. I think I talked to Laura about this. I don't know if she's here, that lady that keeps calling. She lives over here, Zuni Canyon. She said she bought the property with no water. And she said, "I heard that you guys got money from Trump. And can I drill a well and, can the city drill a well?" And I pay a hundred dollars a month. So I don't know who she is. I told Laura to find out.
She owns a well?
She's, she's in an area that doesn't have city water. She's barely in city limits. But she's about a mile away from the Coliseum.
Dominic and all them guys.
She's further down.
Then that shouldn't be in the city limit, should it?
It's barely. It's right on the edge.
Because I'm thinking with all them guys out there, their wells going dry, maybe with the generator station issue being shut down, those wells will come back now, okay? Because I know that's been the bitch that we've been had out there. I've had that bitch for about six years now. That we don't have the water. Our wells are going dry. And I believe that water line goes as far as Richard Jones's house.
Right.
Okay, which is right across the street. I don't know what it would take to shoot a three-inch line, a two-inch line, whatever it is up there to get it. Maybe, like I said, maybe with the generator station shutting down, that's something else we can monitor at our wells too, Mark? To see if the level's coming up or not. Because if it is, then it'll affect all them wells, all through the valley, okay?
I live out of court from there too.
Oh, yeah, because they don't have no water, guys. Their wells go dry, they have to wait three days to get water back. And then they would do the city limit, they're paying city taxes. They oughta have city water and city sewer.
We talked about this, that we, uh, I think we've got a grant or something to put a bigger line under.
Yes, sir. So that's the USDA, five million dollars. Part of that USDA five million dollar, uh, grant slash loan is to take a ten-inch line. What's there currently is a six-inch line. And it'll take it under I-40, and it'll pop out around the Zuni Canyon area. Because right now, they have inadequate water pressure as it is. And so even if we ran water up to where Dominic Malaris, they wouldn't have the pressure and they just wouldn't be happy as is. So, once we build up that infrastructure, get it out there, then at that point, we can look at expanding.
Like I said, maybe by then the wells will come back because we're not suffering all that.
Who is that gonna be?
Uh, I'm meeting again with the engineers tomorrow. We're still in the design phase. And so we probably have a, a few more months of design. Probably looking at eighteen months till construction. That, you're talking two, five million dollar projects.
Yeah, but Dominic's well, Dominic, Dominic, the hill said that his well is way down. You know, the bad bar.
Yeah, I'll make him. He's a good guy.
Both Dominic's were out there.
Oh, yeah.
Well, Jason, is he there too? They use the old corner, we can get him now.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Any deals, Rick? My turn. We had another finance director quit. I met with her. I hope you all met with her. Laura says she's lying. Laura said Kimberly was lying. That's what she told me in my meeting with her. I don't believe it, but that's another ballgame altogether. I believe it's time for this council to put their hatred away from me and start doing what's right for the citizens of this town. Um, and the last note I've got. This pandemic crap, guys, okay? Wear masks, six feet of distance. If that crap worked, it wouldn't be spreading the way it is. It's still spreading. Everyone's wearing a mask. Everyone's doing everything that's supposed to be doing, and it's still spreading. But it's spreading in the places that are on lockdown. New York, California, the Navajo Reservation, New Mexico. Not in the states that are open, the ones that are on lockdown. So, my opinion of this pandemic stuff is the golf course open. I asked you this the other day.
Yes.
So it is open. Was it open the other day when I asked you and you said you didn't know?
Yes.
Okay. Because the golf course needs to be open, okay? Period. We've lost way too much money out there this year. Period. But this pandemic stuff, guys, if everything they were telling us was working, it wouldn't be spreading the way it is. And the perfect example that I have of this are the firefighters and the police officers. These guys wear a mask all the time. And yet, they were the first ones within our city departments to catch it. Okay? But yet, they, they follow all the protocols, no matter what, okay? My, my coworker, Richard Buck, I have a word. So many doubles my last weekend worked because he was exposed to his grandson. Him and Rhonda, okay? In the car, in the house, with the grandson. The grandson's positive. The whole family gets it. The mom, the dad, all the brothers and sisters, but Richard and Rhonda don't. Explain it to me, guys. It's God's, period. Period. For whatever reason, some people are getting it, some people ain't.